Jay, Bob, the G N A Shantua, that not with that, um, fight post. Yeah, they are that my Ashner. Koyad, eh, um, art is a quite a good, uh, they should me, um. Last month, eh, what Asha reported, she, she, she in front of us, they be the, um, bonds. None, this bond say, yeah, I get the, I'm switching, um, but the handbaggy. Uh, she Craigie, um, delegate Herman Daniels, but I should miss. I don't know who nation, the legislative services, the key. They are there, um, about a year and a half as Lee, a call. Um, by hands and Craig, it's, I think, can every month, maybe not like he. Janoyan, like, hey, though, um, she, yeah, that hit all of that energy by Kansas. Um, try it, oh, that era. Uh, oh, 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 you, but to not the dog. Oh, you, I should, eh, yeah, okay. Um, she had, but Craigie, Dino, I get on dice of Craigie. Um, last month, eh, Craigie, chapter level, four chapters, not on the OJ to Shantua, those, I think, can. Eight, ah, but make this. A call, meetings, not like he, eh, let's touch it, um. Attend mainly, like, you need, eh, uh, so I think can president Geraldine Sheen and then, um, virtual meetings, so it's, uh. Um, uh, but, huh. But here needs and Jody, oh, you meetings, not late, at the three to five meetings, not late per day. Okay, we try to attend all of those needs, uh, uh, that they, um. Your laptop, the iPad, the phone, major, uh, for meetings, needs, not that. A call, um. Last month, chapter meetings, one last day, uh. We participated in those, I don't hear much of reports that, uh, for it made me. I don't, um, last month, I think, Craigie, intergenerational conference, so, for Yale, uh, planning meeting, as lean. Eh, Craigie, um, June, and the Higgy, eh, um, um. I think can manager, Earl Sumbril, eh, uh, um, meeting, yeah. Yeah, no. Oh, Craig, I should change, just like, found another, um. Craig, uh, meeting, as lean, I know, um, Shantua, the last month. The, um, annual strategic session, yeah, last, eh, the twin arrows there. Um, April nineteenth to the twenty-first, and, uh, it's, uh, issue projects, and that, and she gave, uh, um. P and Z, they're planning and zoning, eh, uh, the chapters, clip C, they're not, eh, it are, eh, are, uh. Um, it's our presentations, but yeah, last, eh, um. Um, they don't know, yeah, last, eh. I don't, OJ, to the, eh, leadership meetings, yeah, like, hey, the, um. Um, audit. And being done, this correction action plan, I get, eh, the, uh, leadership meeting, yeah, and that, like. Not as I, eh, the, uh, um, meetings. Um, schedule, they, oh, um, uh, sure, planning the chapter meeting, eh, yeah. It, um, um, participate on me, too. I don't know, who nation, the, eh, um. Um, a hundred days, who, Nigrin, Craigie, president. New administration, uh, um, report, the, eh, the spring session, the, eh, April seventeenth to the twenty-first, and that, eh, that spring session. Court illegally, yeah, like, uh, uh, yeah, last netball. Um, all the different departments, divisions, eh, thought they gave their reports. Although, eh, that legislations introduced by, eh, the, eh, they made those, um. Some votes on those, if not taking, taking action on it. Whether they approve it, or, um, they table it, or they move it forward, eh, it's offspring session, the, yeah, last, eh. Um. I don't have the net, Craig, you could, uh, and he, uh, I'm switching, most chapters. Um, they, that, she, information things, and they give the, eh, they should come, you get, uh, no. Um, letters, uh, I don't, calling into different places for them, eh, the, um, um. Then you're not sure. Call, um, Craigie, the late Joe Salt, LeShantua, then, uh, eh, um. Um, the widow, Genevieve Salt, eh, it's, uh, um, appreciation dinner, that, but she, no. She, um, planned, if they, eh, of call, eh, she asked, so they, Paige Marriott, then. How she invite the, eh, like, eh, it's, I, yeah, I'm the, eh, a call, eh, um, not source, and must. So, last, oh, they, best of the positive, they can, eh, the, uh, um, then yet. Uh, they need kid, uh, no, eh, the, uh, um, then you had letters, and they, uh. I don't, um. Craigie, eh, that, uh, meetings, when the, I think, eh, I, I forward that to delegate Daniels. I don't, every morning, eight o'clock, on the dot, I let him know what meetings are planned for today, and our agenda, um. So, it's, uh, it's, I would, uh, machine. Other, eh, at the meetings, they nine, ten o'clock, and much kid, they, eh, call, eh, the, this is, yes, eh, a call. They, um, by the end of the day, we just kind of recap what we've done and what needs to be done. Eh, that's, um, making this. I don't, um, they, now, who nation, they, eh, like, RDC, the, out of law and order committee. Um, has state, the need of being that budget and finance. Um, special meetings, done, that, now, eh, don't, uh, we log in on that. Other, eh, Utah, then, though, um, now, who Utah commission. Eh, though, we take part in that, because OJ toes in Utah, and not as on his part, and he in Utah. Who, eh, she, uh, just, um, issuing commissions, meetings, uh, certainly, Senator Jen, Utah governor, to them. It's, uh, in a call, uh, meeting, but, uh, the, eh, the, I mean, it's not. Um, I don't, uh, uh, could be, uh, Shaheen, eh, call, yeah, that, um. Questions, like, both, you know, she, eh, Craig, she's your phone number, don't include, eh, eh, she a business cell number, nine two eight, five three zero. Seven, five, five, six, I don't see email, A E A Small Canyon at nowhood-nsm.gov. Call, yeah, head, uh, back to you, president.
The, in that, I'm, oh, yeah, I need, eh, I did it. And she's not, uh, eh, gee, Elsie, Elsie's small canyon, yeah. Eh, in lane here, best one, so, I need, I'm not, nice. Um, um, we can, uh, do, eh, a, some, that, eh, how, stop, a call. You're caught, eh, it, ah, did it, what, ah, do, ah, ah, that, I'm, uh, yeah, yeah, um. Yes, uh, eh, the, uh, big, uh, which, virtual, and can we be able, uh. Uh, they listen in to, to different meetings, oh, you, every day, there's meetings, uh, at Navajo. Um, nation, capital, and wonder rock, eh, the, the, uh, 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 the, uh. Committees meeting, they, uh, a call, eh, she, but not, eh, yes, and be the. And called, she tries to take, um, stay on top of everything, much less, um, see that, the four chapters, not just. On, or, J, K, Shantua, the, to be, can, eh, uh, so. Um, meetings, and say, he is, though, she tries to participate in all that. So, our council delegate, Lenny Herman Daniels, which, uh, who, Nishi, he do, but the, I mean, eh, do. Then, eh, I, it's, I, uh, so, the, uh, so, yeah, I, uh. I, I, yeah, shut up. I hit, now, I'm, I'm, nah. Um, a lot of, we need, eh.
One more.
One more?
Uh, five, oh.
Okay. We need one more person, Jen, to make twenty-five.
Is you, is you, yeah, yeah, she's in the glass.
Okay.
Really?
Yeah, she's, um, what's my bad?
These are, um, nine, um, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twenty, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four. Oh, twenty-five, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and. Don't fear, we do have lunch for you, so. Don't, don't, the, chin, don't, say stuff. I think what we have is.
Hamburgers, hot dogs.
Hamburg and hot dogs with chips, potato salad, drink, and cake, a big one for dessert.
And Earl's bringing the cake, uh, Earl's coming back with the cake.
Okay. So, eh, uh, um, that's what our menu is today. So, every chapter meeting, uh, and they, and, and, that, you, so, of, though. But, the, 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 China, and, uh, how, uh, and then your stomachs are full. So.
I don't know, who's cooking? The cold, only when it's online. Who's the one more? I thought, Priscilla was the last one.
She's not, so, yeah. Oh, he's three hundred. There's, um.
I thought it was Priscilla. Yeah, Priscilla's on there. Yeah, Priscilla's the last, I was waiting for that, too.
Need one, some more.
It's number four, is it number four? Yeah.
Hi.
Good morning.
Hey, guys.
While you're right here, give you a report, Jen.
Or, do I have one? Um, we have, um. Um, birthdays. Our honorable secretary treasurer's birthday. I don't, then, uh, Jamie's birthday, and Sue's birthday, and Ronald's birthday. We have a birthday cake for all those guys, all names are.
All the moms.
Oh, so, yeah, and birthdays coming up, too, so, it's been, actually, so. As I go, going out and get a cake this morning, um, so, eh, eh, and, I don't, um. We were allocated the summer views and deployment project funds this year. Um, last week, or two weeks ago, should be, uh, something at the, at the, um, summer, or the spring, is it the spring council session? He's not, as we, I don't, eh, uh, ten, nine, actually, eh, uh, just president, she, 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 uh, I think. It went across on Friday, and then it got approved, I think, that same day, or it might have been that following Monday. Um, but this year, we didn't get as much as we used to get. We only got an allocation of fifteen thousand compared to thirty thousand last year, so that's half, so. With that said, that, that indicates that our voter registration is down. So, who, whoever's been vote last year, during the general election, that they probably purge those people, meaning that they took those people off that list. So, that's a major, a major, uh, there's a lot of people that lost their voter registration. So, if you don't, uh, know if they're registered or not, I urge you to contact the election office this week. Uh, we can ask on your behalf, they, they, rather possibly, uh, the person that's requested that, we, she. So, um, doing my math, um, we, um, got a cut of, uh, uh, maybe about twelve thousand. Compared to, Joe, uh, they, they allocate these funds, they allocate it by, uh, uh, what they call fifty-fifty formula. So, two million dollars should have come for all hundred and ten chapters. So, the first million was allocated with equal distribution, meaning that all chapters got the same amount of that first million. The second million was based on registered votes, so they did not, uh, basically, so, so, basically, our allocation of the registered votes was only like four thousand seven dollars. So, compared to the, um, actual, the extra nine thousand plus from last year, so, eh, eh, it was, so. Um, like I said, um, it can equal if the wind system, so, we have to budget that, we have to, um. To figure out what we're going to, how we're going to use that, and what we're going to pay, and all that stuff. So, um, right now, we can only afford to get, uh, six students to work this year. So, maybe at fourteen dollars and ten cents per hour for two weeks, they would act, so, uh. But from what we had from last year, with that, it's probably going to go up to about nine. So, every year, because they get a twenty, twenty, and third students to work, but due to that, uh, the, the funds being, um. Half of what we got then last year, that we can only cover six of them. And normally, what the other chapters do is, is they do the two separate, um, phases. They do first phase, and then they do a second phase, but, and here, they'll be like that, um, so we can only do one time, so. Eh, um, right now, we're still accepting applications, and we only solicited three of them today. So, we don't have, um, uh, that many applicants yet, so our application deadline is this month, the last Friday, gonna have. So, uh, like I, like I show you guys everything, um, and the reason why I show you, we show you guys these things is to understand that. That's how we have to budget these finances, we have to identify where everything was going, and then, I don't put it, which, now, I'm talking, eighty thousand, but, so. We have to do all the calculations about the wages, and then we have their taxes and all that stuff. And it's a funny thing for people saying, um, that a, a chapter manager, oh, please, of nothing, uh, she was, and, and. Within that time, much, I got, uh, 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 and, unfortunately, it's, it's the people that don't get involved, uh, this. Oh, I thought, uh, uh, eh, I, I, but, um, for your introductions, like always said, these monies are not just overseen by me. I also report to the Navajo Nation Auditor General's office, and then the Division of Community Development. And all the officials know that all those people have access to our paper counting, all, uh, our accounting system. They, they, so, they, they not go, eh, eh, uh, eh, every quarter, and not even go every month, so, eh, we're, that's why I do report to you from here, so. Whatever's reported to you from here is sent out to those people on a monthly basis. So, our, our, our county system is backed up on a monthly basis, and sent into these, uh, uh, Navajo Nation departments, so. We, uh, they, so, we, we, they, eh, eh, so, um, they, eh, they, uh, oh, they, so, they, uh, but, uh, they, yeah, they took it up, and now, they oversee everything. Uh, on a month-to-month basis, so whatever we report to you from here, that's also what we report to Navajo Nation. So, there's nowhere that I'm putting extra money in my pocket, and then to tell you, um, um, I, over, I, as, as it is. Because in my position, they go to, oh, you see the city managers, and the town managers, like, or the city of Page, the city manager. Doesn't, the, what I mean is, what's, maybe about a fraction, a fraction of what that city manager, Paige, is. And I have more roles and responsibilities, oh, I, you go, eh, not, you know, eh, 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 but that doesn't determine, I'm doing what I need to do. And, and so, eh, eh, it's, 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 oh, it, it's always nice to just go right to, to, oh, George, I don't think, uh, I'm in, oh, George, uh. But when somebody comes into your office and tells you, uh, eh, she, she, uh, manager, oh, please, eh, this, that, oh, she, eh, so, I, you, me, that's what I heard. You know, and, and it says, this, uh, we, uh, me, uh, can, eh, can, uh, go, eh, go, uh, that, I should, uh, be, eh, be, not, uh, that, me, and that's all it is, 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 is that. And, and, I, you know, I go, that, and, I did, it, oh, I go, that, and, you know, I hear a lot of things from people. I hear a lot of things from people who, who, who talk about my relatives, and, 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 you know, it's not a fact. I mean, I, I know that, you know, sometimes you, you might have something to say, but, but, you know what, you guys need to think about this, this, this. If you don't have anything nice to say, don't say it at all. Oh, yeah. And, and you cannot be slanderous and defaming other people just because you think you're high in mighty, or that you're closer to God, or whatever. Uh, but that's, eh, eh, or that's, eh, that, and I don't like that, and I don't appreciate that. Because I believe that everybody is equal, uh, to, uh, uh, regardless of who they are, where they come from, and so forth. She, uh, the, uh, eh, she, uh, she, uh, she, uh, she, uh, she, uh, and, and, and to hear people say stuff about other people. I always think, this, eh, I, we, the, uh, uh, I should, uh, but, she, uh, she, uh, I should, uh, but, not, uh. I give it, the, you know, that, so, but, not, uh, so, it's, eh, you know, that, so, but, not, uh, too, eh, that, uh, that, so, but, not, uh, too, eh, that, uh. Those, uh, the way it's, eh, okay, you know, we think that, and, but, you know, but, at the end of the day, you have to push that aside. Because you're working for everybody, regardless of, of what they see, or what they do. Of course, you, oh, that's, uh, and, and, and sometimes, I, I could just walk away from what I'm doing, right? Where would this happen? You, like, goes, uh, I'm, I'm, go, eh, and, oh, eh, eh, everybody is fine, there's no progress, nothing happening. And, and to, and to be truthful, that, I, I think, all these things that happened with the time, within the time that I came back, I was at the center of everything. I was the one that was going out there, making things move. And, and I didn't think that we, 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 uh, see, the, eh, I'm, I mean, we wouldn't have this, and I wasn't a part of this whole, like, vision, right? So, of, eh, 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 uh, and, 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 you guys want to say something, be mindful of that, I, I, eh, eh, and, 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 it hurts people, too. eh, 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 and that's why people don't really care. So whenever we have something to say, before you say it, because we have been saying those kind of things that happen together, first, eh, 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 so, so, eh, 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 but right now, like I said, we still need more students for our summer leave program. So if you have, if you want to send for students that you have up there, tell them, let them know that we have several more positions that we need to fill. And the deadline for it is May twenty-sixth, yeah, Friday, by five o'clock, applications need to be met. Yeah, shama?
Fourteen, I don't know.
Fourteen. Fourteen to twenty-four, if you would, okay. So if you have any high school students or college students, let them know to apply for that. Any other questions? Thanks. Um, so the other thing I wanted to let you know is, um, me tomorrow, we have a work session that we're meeting for. So I won't be in this, all, tomorrow afternoon. Auto, next week, eh, we have our, our work session with our council members, our council members. Eh, I will be here all that whole week next week. So I'll be back until two, three, four, Thursday, Thursday, and then I noticed on the agenda it says the food pay is, or the food distribution is on May thirtieth. It's actually the week before, I think it was.
I thought it was twenty-second.
Yeah. The fourth, my, my, yes, twenty-second. So, eh, eh, um, shi, oh, please, the twenty-second of May is the food distribution. Uh, Priscilla, yes?
But, um, Earl, wait, let me call the meeting to order. We have, we hit corn.
Um, by, eh, ba, oh, she, she, I can go through the, eh.
Okay, that's when the question, so hold your questions. Um, okay, we have, um, corn, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at twelve oh five, twelve zero five. Twenty-seven, twenty-six, and there's two online, right?
Hmm, yes, two.
Okay, um, I will call on Shaja, uh, Teddy, let to give our, to give the indication. Inha, ta, da, zan, ya, ash, ho, ne.
So, eh, 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 eh,
Thank you. Okay, so we come to approval of agenda, eh, kuda, agenda, and, so, I think I need a motion. Okay, Ronaldo, Willie, second. He, be, ke, no, ha. Okay, Harold. Okay, um, questions, comments, concerns on the agenda, except for those dates that I gave you that are changed, auto, Earl, do, uh, uh, Saint Mary's Food Distribution is May twenty-second, not May thirty. And then, um, the District Two Grazing Meeting is May eleventh. Where?
I'm going.
Okay, um, if it's not at Alfa Mountain, I'll probably be here, I think. But, um, they'll let you know more where, where that's gonna be right now, it's up in the air. Auto, Permittees Meeting, eh, ya, uh, May seventeenth, eh, al, qu. So, famina, chosin, ke, da, hallo, mi, ki, it's important for you guys to come to those trainings. Auto, oh, shikba, hazendo, no, san, ni, shi, eh, eh, um, eh, la, eh, the, ben, na, chok, si, na, chok, he, da, ba, ha, ya, da, he, da, eh, ba, al, so, da, eh, eh, ba, na, eh, si, he, he, da, eh, eh, ni, eh, shikba, hazendo, no, sa, eh, 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 May seventeenth. May seventeenth.
The church, I think, they'll be close.
Oh, okay, church, jijana, it'll be at their church.
To your senior senate. Kiss him on the waiver, if they don't want.
So with those changes, any other questions, comments, concerns?
We have a change.
All of the changes, yeah.
There's a reason.
Yeah, those were the dates when we printed the agenda, but it changed. That's why the grazing was on the phone, those dates changed and then the...
Did the confirmation.
Oh, so those are, those are the changes. Okay, if there's no comments, concerns, um...
I need, I need, eh, 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 District Two. Yeah, District Two.
Okay, so, uh, Malfo Mountain, jijana, May eleventh, that, Malfo Mountain.
May eleven, and, uh, ah, that Thursday, ah, the, ah, the, the, eh, eh, eh.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. Eh, agenda in favor, ki, yata, to, shni, ah, ko, ah, ha, eh, ta, to, na, ni.
Tiffany votes in favor, Nicole Curly, how do you vote?
Never mind, uh, checked. Twenty, twenty-one.
Eh, Permittees, eh, it'll be over there, so, May seventeenth.
Eleven. Eleven, thirteen. Um, on Thursday. Two, two, eleven, thirteen.
Eh, the fifteenth.
Eight, fifteen, sixteen. Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Okay, the agenda, approval of the agenda passes with twenty-four in favor, zero opposed, four abstained. Akona, eh, na, da, di, ni, eh, eh, approval of the last meeting minutes from April ten, twenty twenty-three. Eh, so, eh, um, you have it in your packet. I will need a motion. He, be, to, na, Priscilla, auto, a, ke, na, eh, ke, no, ha, eh. Questions, comments, concerns on the last meeting minutes? At, na, eh, ya, vote. All those in favor, raise your hands, ye, go, yata, to, shni. Eh, da, agenda, eh, sa, da, na, eh, 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 na, eh, 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 that's why it's there.
Nicole Curly, how do you vote? Tiffany Curly, how do you vote? Tiffany votes in favor.
Stand, stand.
Nicole, how do you vote?
Oppose?
Twenty-four, twenty-four votes in favor, thanks.
Okay, approval of the last meeting minutes passes with twenty-four, approved, zero opposed, and six abstained. Okay, presentations. Um, Legislative Delegate, eh, I, don't, just, oh, it's, na, eh, after meeting start, geez, na, ha, da, auto, um, okay, if, um, our council delegate does get on the line, eh, eh, ba, the, the, us at that time, but right now, I'll go ahead and give it to the grazing.
Uh, I changed it on, yeah, actually you got, eh, Thursday, this Thursday is not Malfo Mountain. Eh, we were trying to get it, put it here, ah, eh, you know, sa, no, me, na, me, he said they, they want, we, we'll have it over there, so, eh, da, ha, na, sa, we be having it over there, cap, eh, grazing District Two, uh, transfer, da, eh, da, eh, 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 because the chapter house will be closed all, all next week. Eh, eh, no, no, the, it's, eh, 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 western agency, eh, 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 even us, eh, so, make sure you, eh, write them down. Auto, they've just been calling around for, in, eh, 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 I have some good hay in the sheep, but it only depends on what we have in our, in the bank. Eh, they, eh, bad, eh, eh, they can ship the sleigh out there themselves and just, one truck carries four hundred and twenty-five, twenty-four bales. Through eight, I think, they, ba, ha, eh, the sign, see, what, what just gonna happen. So, eh, eh, I was, from contact with them, eh, 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 which is, that's, eh, eh, so, eh, can deliver, eh, some, you know, to the chapter house and everything. Eh, 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 he also has some okay, if you only okay, which is eighteen dollars a bale. Three, eh, 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 twenty-two, fifty a bale. So, eh, eh, we try to make it ready to with them and see how we're gonna do this. So, eh, 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 I was just keeping in contact with them, eh, 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 we'll, we'll figure it out, eh, 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 we'll post it and we'll tell you guys the permit holder, eh, 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 auto, eh, 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 be working on the, uh, planning, eh, 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 schedule, eh, 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 June, eh, 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 so, we've been working with three, uh, eh, 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 Ramler. A lot of people giving use of, of a chain that, or, or, they come out, eh, so, eh, 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 it's, uh, most important that you give black lakes to your cow, your horses, not horses, eh, sheep, eh, 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 what, vaccination for the cattle and the sheep, you can't give it to the horses. Eh, da, sa, eh, 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 hello, hello, no. You gone away? So, eh, 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 so there's some medication that will be no longer buying, buying out there, eh, one of these, uh, uh, akodeino, ke, eh, 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 you will not be buying out there anymore off the market. This, eh, eh, people were using that, giving it to the healthy animal. Auto, auto, da, eh, go, ba, na, eh, 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 that's what they found out, so they, they wanna get that off the market, eh, 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 that, eh, eh, the only one they don't buy is. So, eh, eh, with a finished horse, vaccination is, it has to be veterinary. Eh, 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 those that were here for that, uh, eh, 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 on the seventeen, eh, 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 ranchers, eh, 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 you wanna get certified, eh, 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 the store, get certification, eh, you will need ranchers, eh, 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 so, eh, 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 you, eh, get certified every three years, eh, 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 we're trying to be working on the, uh, cattle man association, eh, 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 and they're wanting us to say that, eh, 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 we've started over here, eh, 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 try to be, eh, 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 reductions in your cattle, eh, trying to bring it down lower than your actual numbers, eh, 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 throughout the summer that we'll be doing all this, eh, 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 so, I mean, people were saying that, eh, 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 people, eh, 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 so, eh, 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 so, we'll be probably charging a lot, eh, 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 but on a cattle, eh, 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 I'll probably give you a little bit of, uh, medication, eh, 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 but make sure when we get, eh, eh, on your scheduled date, give us that, uh, lot number and expiration date and what it is, eh, 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 put it on the list, on the paper, eh, 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 so, eh, 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 okay, stand, thank you.
Thank you for the report, I want, uh, um, go, stop, my, eh, eh, eh. Okay, auto, kuna, shi, na, na, dollars. Um, Ms. Alsie, um, is Herman gonna, uh, join us today or is he, um, busy with a lot of Okay, well, she's probably listening on other meetings too. So, go, go ahead and go on. Um, under all business, eh, eh, we have a resolution that was tabled from last month to this month. But, um, hashit, eh, eh, because the person who was sponsoring this, it says chapter administration, but, uh, it was another person that was, um, wanting this to be on the, um, to be the resolution, eh, eh, what it was about was, um, I E C, so, case, unified school district, eh, we do have a representative from the community for the kids over there, for the Indian education community, eh, 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 the person that's representing us is Ronaldo Willie, eh, eh, um, meeting, eh, 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 there's another Kianta Unified School District, but if, eh, 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 I E C number again, eh, 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 there's a member, um, I E C member that goes to the Kianta school, um, eh, eh, meeting, da, eh, eh. Eh, but, Shanto, though, eh, there's a member, um, I E C member that goes to the Kianta School, um, I just meeting that. But, um, all, all at large, it is, uh, community representatives, oh, the, no. According, last month, they were, um, table, eh, yeah, then, uh, now we're back to it again. But like I said, the representative for this resolution is not here, hasn't explained to, to you what this is about, eh, the, uh, yeah, the, the, because, uh, is there a motion? Is there a motion or?
I would say just it would be better for him to show up to explain everything to us than just voting here and just putting him in that position. And he doesn't do nothing about it, so then we had, we wouldn't be voting for nothing.
Okay.
I think everybody feels that we should just let, let it be right now. So, it would have been better, like I said, if he would showed up.
Okay, so do you want to just put it back on table? Or do you?
So, I would be.
Take no action on it?
I would just put it back on the table and see if he does show up next time.
Okay.
For next time, two percent, two percent of the school, he's still in session, he teaches over there.
Yeah, um, he, he, he did made a point to be here again, but he didn't show last week. Or last month. So, motion to table? Motion to table, yeah, um, this resolution, motion to table was made by, um, Curtis?
Yes.
Brayce? Um, until he comes to, not, until he comes to, um, present, I guess. So, that could mean. I don't think motion to table, we don't need a second, it just becomes table.
You do, you do. You still do.
Okay, who seconds that then? Okay, second by Roy, Callum. This one doesn't take a vote?
It does.
Huh?
It does.
It does?
Yes.
Okay, I hear all different ways, so, uh, let's just do the vote and everything. All those in favor to table this resolution, raise your hands up high.
Thirty-one. Nicole Curley, how do you vote? Nicole poses. Okay. Thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-three.
Is there a stop at the outside?
No.
You counted wrong.
Did I count it wrong twice?
Probably.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. Plus nine, thirty, okay, thirty. Must have counted somewhere twice, thirty.
Okay, opposed? Abstained. Okay, the motion for table, um, under the whole business for T B K two zero two three dash one hundred dash zero zero four passes with thirty approval, zero, opposed, two abstained. Okay, we're going to go under to new business. And I will give, um, the phone, uh, microphone to the secretary, treasurer to read you the, um, resolution.
New business, T B K two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero one, approving and approving the April two thousand twenty-three budget report. You guys have that with you guys on your, uh, packet. The those online, you should be able to see this. As of last month, the budget has been reconciled. And this is what is been reconciled. Number one, general activity fund, we have five thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars and forty-one cents. Number two, personnel and travel is eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred fifteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Number three, trust funds, land claims is four thousand eight hundred and forty-eight, nine dollars and ninety cents. Number eight, the summer youth employment, we have four thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirteen cents. Number nine is housing discretionary funds, nineteen thousand, seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Local governance act, number ten is nine thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Number twelve is the, uh, chapter official stipend is seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and zero, uh, and three cents. Scholarship general fund, we have three hundred and fifty dollars for number thirteen. Number fourteen, we have scholarship claim funds of six thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Number fifteen is public employment, uh, sixty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. Veterans funds is nine, uh, sorry, three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. Emergency fund is twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. And the nomination sales tax, we have thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred, thirty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Capital improvement outlay program, C I P fund, we have zero dollars. Then number thirty-four, we have the agricultural fund of thirteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Unhealthy food tax is five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety cents. And other funds, which is the solar vote, funds is zero dollars. Bringing with, uh, bringing us a total of three hundred and five thousand, six hundred, ninety, sixty dollars and ninety-five cents.
Okay, so that, the question is read and shown here, uh, do I have a motion? For Sawa? So, see, second? Mary? And the clerk. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, um, Ms. Sawa, number three?
There's a whole bunch of things here. No. Land claim. Earl can, Earl's online, he wants to answer that.
He's, he's gonna look it up and explain to you.
There's a whole bunch of things on here.
Okay, there are two, two, um, fund accounts that the chapter uses to pay for office supplies, pay for work, paper and stuff like that. Eh, um, these two, um, use, lay the, like, use the number two, eh, personnel and travel. Eh, yeah, that's for, to pay for the wages and then for travel, um, for meetings in here. But, hold on.
So, according to the B I M policies, it basically states that that funds are used for the, um, supplies, office supplies, operating supplies, office equipment, utility expenses, construction repairs, which you guys have seen out there, um, the remodel of the, uh, the chapter. And then also like heavy equipment stuff, basically maintaining and maintenance stuff. And then also just assisting with other community needs such as like, um, livestock and then also professional services and all that stuff. So, that's pretty much what that fund is used for, comes out of the trust fund. Eh, that's agriculture. For the hay.
For the hay?
Oh, heating. Heating, yeah, that's including.
Yeah, the utilities, it helps pay for the utilities. Get more voters so we can have more money.
Brings us all together.
Oh, it gets us closer together, remember when they're closer to each other, you're one. But in reality, um, for this heating system here, it, um, they have to, to kind of fix it. Uh, when it was installed, um, they didn't, uh, there's a certain thing that we didn't consider. So, they're looking into repairing that so that it can, um, work as it should.
It worked this morning.
So, eh, eh.
That's the only thing that matters.
But, yeah, that's what it's used for. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Kimi?
Number, number thirteen and fourteen. Thirteen and fourteen, what's the difference between the general, general fund and claims fund? It's just like the way she was asking about what is the trust fund and the claim fund? What's the difference?
Well, the difference is where it comes from. It comes from trust fund. It's just general, from the general fund of the Malfo Nation. So, in this one, the, the scholarship, general fund, comes from the Malfo Nation, that's what it's funded from. But the claims fund, it comes from a different one. And then the, the claims fund, eh, is what's used for, um, to help the citizens, assistance.
Comes from the chapter?
The God. It comes from the claims, the claims fund that, that they call. There's different funding that the Malfo Nation has that, that's set up. One comes from the general fund, come, another comes from the trust claim fund. Another comes from a different funding, so these are the funding sources that it comes from, where the money comes from. But both funds are used for scholarship. Agriculture infrastructure fund, that also came from the, um, Malfo Nation. It was totally used for, to buy hay and stuff like that. They counsel, pass a daily log, that's what it was. This is half of what, um, this, what's left here is half of what the total was. The first half, eh, was already, um, bought and distributed back last year. Auto, the second half, eh, yeah, um, they, they saved it for this, this year. Or it was supposed to be in January or February, but hey, hey, they, they all were saying that they don't have anything to sell to the chapters until June. So, eh, eh, to individual persons, to individual buyers, eh, they had paid for that, but not bulk, bulk, um, as they call it in bulk prices, eh, they didn't have it for the, um, until June. And that's what the grazing official told you about that. He just got contacted, just, you know, before the meeting about, um, an offer from the Nevada bank. So, that money will be tor, used towards the purchase of those things. Can you repeat that again, cause I? Eh, eh, yeah, for individual sale, that's what, that, that's open to them. But for, to help community as community distribution, eh, people, eh, they, they're, um, because it's a different price. They have to deal with different prices. To individual, eh, it's a, um, individual buyer, eh, yeah, they have a different price. The ones that are for sale, these, they, they buy at a different price. But the one that will have to sell it to us for community, eh, that's a different price too.
Wholesale.
So, eh, not, um, they, they were saying that they're not going to have the bulk of their hay produced until June. Eh, eh, she, but these hay, eh, yeah, they have a, 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 um, individual prices because the, like, we don't buy thousands of bales of hay as an individual. We only come up what to a hundred, a hundred and fifty bales of hay at a time. So, eh, yeah, they have that. So, eh, eh, it's just depending on who the, uh, who the hay is, uh, I love you. Who, who, who's selling? Yeah, distributed, thank you. Any other questions? Eh, because their resolution is on number four. That, but that's what was like, though, from last year. Okay, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Twenty-seven. Just twenty-seven.
Oh, okay.
Twenty-eight, okay. Twenty-eight. Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine.
Opposed? No. How do you approve?
Thirty. Thirty.
Oppose? Abstained. Okay, TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero one passes with thirty approval. Zero opposed, two abstained. Okay, auto, number two.
Number two, TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero two, accepting and approving the monthly cash receipt deposits for April two thousand twenty-three in the amount of one thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and six cents. Again, this one here is the items that were provided from the chapter. So like water, when you're getting water out there, you're paying for water. Uh, services up here such as resumeing or copying or waste management, the trash, all that stuff. A, that's what was collected last month. And so that's what we're gonna approve on that one.
Then any donations or anything like that, that's given to the chapter. It's all included in this amount here. Do I have a motion? Okay, Jamie? Melissa? Second? Okay, Roy? All right, questions, comments, concerns? Um, I-
They'll be here.
Chapter assistant, your workers will be here, the manager.
Yeah.
The kid will be here. The secretary will be here.
Okay. No other questions, comments, or concerns? Now go ahead and come for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Twenty-eight.
What number is?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Thirty.
Oppose? Abstained. Okay, TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero two passes with thirty approval. Zero opposed, two abstained. Number three.
Number three is TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero eight three, accepting and supporting the student financial assistance to the eligible applicant in the amount requested.
Okay, do I have a motion? Jamie, Melissa? Um, let's get a motion and second, first, second? So, okay, this resolution is for a-
Yeah, she's on there.
Ms., uh, Nicole? Are you gonna be, uh, going to school full-time or part-time?
I am going to school full-time.
Okay, so it's for full-time student assistance.
Six hundred, it will be six hundred for full-time.
Okay, that's what it says? It's, it's six hundred, the, the set, um, amount is six hundred for full-time. Okay, yeah, the, the set amount for full-time student carrying twelve credit hours or more shall be assisted with six hundred. Part-time student carrying eleven credit hours or less shall be assisted with four hundred. Technical vocational training shall be assisted with four hundred. Those are the set, um, limits for the scholarship. Um, Ms. Nicole, she said, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself to the people here and, um, just tell us a little bit about yours?
Hi, I'm, my name is Nicole Curley. I am Carolinda Greenstone's daughter. I am currently the CLUPC Secretariat Treasurer right now for, um, Tapikin Chapter. I am going to school full-time, um, at G Grand Canyon University, um, in Phoenix, um, doing online classes. I, right now, I'm majoring in my government in, um, local public policy. I'm getting, I will be receiving my bachelor's. Um, and I'm just trying to look for any other scholarship out there. And since our chapter, um, has the funding for, um, scholarships, um, I wanted to apply. So that was my interest on applying.
Again, she's the one who applied for this assistant. So, any other questions, comments, or concern?
For full-time or part-time?
Full-time, she said, full-time. And she said she's working towards her bachelor's.
Bachelor's in public policy.
Backward in public-
Policy.
Policy. If there are no other questions, oh, thank you, Nicole. Um, if there are no other questions, I'll go ahead and ask for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Yeah, I got you too. Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Eighteen.
You wanna read, do it?
Yeah, go ahead. Everybody reads, hi. Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one. Thirty-one. No, thirty. I abstained.
Oppose? Abstained. TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero three passes with thirty approval. Zero opposed, three abstained. Number four.
TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash four, accepting and adopting the Tapikin Chapter FY two thousand twenty-three supplemental budget of the Summer Youth Employment Project. Funds in the amount of fifteen thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars as budgeted according to the attachments, sponsored by the Chapter Administration. And that's what he wanted.
Okay, you will have a motion. Mary? Okay, second? Ronaldo Willie? Questions, comments, concerns? Yes, Mr. Gray Allen?
Why is it lower fifteen thousand? Why is it low from the basket? Basket thirty?
Uh, because two million was, um, two million was approved for that, for this program. So because of the fifty-fifty formula, the first million was equal distributions among a hundred and ten chapters. The second million is based on voters' registration for each chapter. So, um, Earl said that the, the voter registration, how to give, was, um, over four thousand. So that means that our voter registration has gone down, has declined. So that's the reason why I was telling you, you will need to get more voters. A, the, a, per, I think they have to re, um, re-register with the, with the, um, Tuba City Elections Office so that they can be counted. So this is why it's important for voting, keep to, keep your voting up. Um, voting, when the voting comes, they look at the general elections. Every year, they look at general election. If you missed two general elections, you keep, that's where you're perched off. Auto, auto, a, you have to re-register to get back on the voting, um, ballot. So, a, now, um, we have to, we have to keep up our voting every year.
For the election, I worked the poll and there was only two thousand five hundred that voted. For the election.
And, and how many is registered?
There's like four thousand two hundred that we counted. So, we have the, so you have the update over there or you can update here. Player, cause some of them, they sit that there. Their post office didn't, um, have their name on it, so they didn't get their cards. So you have to go to the election office or here, you can vote your, um, re-register. Take your blue card.
Okay, that's how the, um, the, the money is, um, the fifty-fifty formula, so whatever money that is given, the first part of that money, a, is just distributed equally among a hundred and ten chapters. The second part of it, gay, it depends on the voter registration of each chapter. So it's important to keep your voting up to date. And those, go out and tell other people, these young people, to start getting involved in voting so that we can get, um, more money, more funding. Okay, any other questions? Mm-hmm. So when you go to register to vote, you can tell them, even, uh, if this is where you wanna play the side, your team. That's the voting card that you get. It's that color.
So the, when you first register, we, I, I'm like, uh, maybe, I, it's almost white, that's a white card, so that's a card. Auto, a, huh? Yes, that's the Malfo Nation voter registration.
That's why, that's why he's explaining right now.
A, the, you go to Tuba City to get, a, counting. That's not the Malfo Nation. So Malfo Nation, big, they, or you get some white ones. There's, there's, so you'll get that color or this blue color. Of course, but when you first register, hey, you're given the temporary detection from your registration.
Do we take that over there?
The, if we send that over there, and they'll send you the, the actual card, either it's blue or white.
But that, those, anyway, I still have it.
I still have it, yes.
Okay, we still, we still have it, I'm like, oh.
And, and, and she always, she'll send it. So that's why you keep that card. So that's still valid, doesn't matter if it's a learner or not. I want a resolution, to add a resolution. It's ten. When it gets down to it, actually. So, we do voter registration here. You just need your, um, either your C I P or your photo I P. And then, so you have to know your census number. If you don't have your C I P, you have to know your census number. So, a, we do that here. So, auto, a, it's, um, the only thing that we don't, we're not able to do is verify if you're registered or not. A, you have to go to the elections office. We can't call the airport to you or we can't talk to them for you because of what they refer to as the Malfo Nation privacy. Oh, and you'll get people that they upset with us because of that, because we do anything like that, because you have to be the one to contact them and talk to them about your information. So, a, what, so- Oh, yeah, Tuba City Elections Office, a, for Tuba City, a, the Elections Office. So, a, if you don't know where that is, it's right there by the, uh, community center, John, a chapter, don't try to, that big building, that, being by, or that old, um, drive-through place, where it's, I do the, the third trailer camera there, that's being by the Elections Office. And their number is nine two eight, two eight three, three three two, zero, that's your name. But you can Google that on, on the internet too. A, they also have a eight hundred number as well.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, comments, or concerns, I'll go ahead and ask for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. Raise them high.
Three, five, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, 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 twenty-eight. And twenty-eight. Twenty-nine, and thirty.
Oppose? Abstained. TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero four passes with thirty approval. Zero opposed. Zero, oppose, three, abstain. Number five.
Number five, TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero five, approving and supporting budget transfer of five hundred dollars from Fund zero three dash six four one two, electric expense fund to Fund zero three dash six three two one, gasoline vehicle of five hundred dollars, of five hundred dollars from zero three dash six four one five, water expenses to Fund zero three dash six three two one, gasoline vehicle, five hundred dollars, and of seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Fund zero three six four one five, water expenses to Fund zero three dash six three five two, purchase food, trip, chapter, uh, seven hundred and fifty dollars to cover the shortfall to date that were not anticipated.
Okay, you have a motion? Okay, Jamie? Second? Ronaldo. Okay, questions, comments, concerns? Atten? I'll go ahead and ask for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Twenty-six. Twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Oppose? Extinge. TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero five. Passes with twenty-seven, approve. Zero, oppose, six, abstain. Number six.
Number six, TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero six, approving and supporting budget transfer of one hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-four cents from zero one dash six six one one insurance property to Fund zero one six three two one gasoline vehicle to cover the shortfalls to date that were not anticipated. Sponsored by Chapter Administration.
Okay. Motion? Priscilla? Second? Jamie? Questions, comments, concerns?
Which vehicle is covered insurance?
Huh?
Which vehicle is covered insurance?
It's the chapter vehicle. To go get mail, to go make bank deposits. To go get cake. Any chapter business. Um, to go get supplies. Uh, whatever. And as you see, gas prices are getting, um, into the, almost five dollars in some places now. Yes, Priscilla?
They're using that to go to Windorock for that meaning.
Yeah, like right now, tomorrow, they're gonna be using it to go to Windorock.
No, chunk that, um, S Y, S I P, or the accounting thing, they're gonna help a cricket with it.
Oh, yeah, um, yeah. In long, long distance, um, travel, you give, that's where that vehicle is being utilized. Otherwise, uh, to the mail, to make the deposit, to pick up supplies, um, from page or from plant stack, or whatever. And we have to use local, down there, up here, but mostly up here.
We have an account with these guys.
The only thing is, we only have an account with these guys. Red Mesa don't want, don't, they don't. They don't. Huh?
We have no trust.
That's just the way it is. All Red Mesas are like that.
They don't accept, because they're from a Mexico-based company.
Huh? Yes, yes. Yeah, um, the insurance, they, uh, Navo Nation get, um, the, through the, Navo Nation, the insurance company. Risk management, under risk management, where, that's where the vehicle is insured, yeah. Eric? Nobody's been caught with DUIs. And state drivers.
In order to have tribal, you have to have cake drivers. Drive with the pets, of course. And you have to have insurance.
Okay, thank you. I'm calling for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And thirty? Thirty.
Oppose? Abstain. TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero six, passes with thirty in favor. Zero, oppose, three, abstain. Number seven.
Number seven, accepting, TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero seven, accepting and approving donations in the amount of twenty-one hundred for the Tapi King Chapters Annual Intergeneration Conference from various organizations sponsored by the Chapter Administration.
Motion? Ronaldo and Howard. Questions, comments, concerns? And for all of it, the whole intergenerational conference for the two days, people donate to the budget. Uh, June eighth and ninth.
You're still fighting.
They're still fighting. No. We haven't had any special meetings since. Four or five years ago. Um, the reason why there were all, um, a special meeting was how during that time, is sometimes a budget comes through, um, the budget for the next fiscal year, or some sort of budget that really needs re-subtention for the chapter, that's the only time special meeting was put during intergenerational. And why during intergenerational was because a lot of voters were here on that day. Otherwise, eh, uh, they, I mean, uh, we wait and wait, we wait for people to come up to three five. So eh, we, eh, but we haven't had that the last four or five years. So those two days, eh, strictly just for, um, intergenerational.
Nicole has her question.
Okay, Miss Nicole, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a question about, um, the approving donations, who are donating?
Other organizations, other companies.
For the other companies?
Through that last donation. The last donation meeting we had. Right here, watch it.
Okay. Uh, the monetary donations, uh, totals twenty-two thousand one hundred. Um, Navo County, six hundred dollars for Comptinel Breakfast. Uh, H F Tours, uh, C donation, five hundred for entertainment. Uh, Navo guys, oil and, Navo Nation, oil and gas. Uh, five hundred for sheep purchase. Adventure Antelope Canyon Tours, a thousand for sheep purchase.
That's it. That's the other ones for.
Okay, so eh, donate, yeah.
Thank you to the donators.
Thank you to the donators.
Oh, eh, for, uh, questions and, and Nicole, eh, remember. So people do donate. Individual, businesses, government, uh, entities, they do donate to the, to the intergenerational. Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Atten, eh, yeah, uh, call for the vote. All those in favor? Everybody should be raising their hands after receiving this. Raise your hands.
Okay, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Thirty. Thirty, thirty, no, okay. Thirty-one, thirty-two. Thirty-two.
Oppose? Abstain. TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero seven, passes with thirty-two in favor. Um, and approval, zero, opposed, one, abstain. Number eight.
TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero eight, approving and supporting purchase of six, six sheep from the Blue Diamond Ranch in the amount of one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars as it, as this vendor has been found to be most responsive and advantageous.
Okay, you have a motion? Jamie? Second? Who, who raised their hand first back there? Priscilla or Mary? Okay, love it, okay, Priscilla? Okay, comments, questions, concerns?
Make sure that, that not so many would get that.
We're a little brother.
Yes.
We tried to reach out to local people, they don't respond. Um, we're already trying to list it in for sheets, okay, we have to borrow.
Intergenerational conference?
Oh, to eat.
For everyone.
Um, during those two days of the conference, um, that, the, um, they provide food, so that's what that is used. And also for butchering demonstration. They do the butchering demonstration for that.
Can we take a leg home?
She wants to take a leg home. If you butcher.
If you, if you purchase it, Miss Nicole, now, all those, the food is used to, uh, feed the people on those two days. Are there any other comments, comments, concerns, questions?
Who's getting the feet?
It's gonna be the liver.
It's gonna be the liver. Okay, if there are no other comments, questions or concerns, I call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six. Twenty-six, twenty-six. Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven. Twenty-eight.
Repeat your question? John, eh, the best of the best, I mean. Best, best, oh, gee, yah, need eh. And we just approved it right before this one. Eh, eh, yeah, and, uh, me, he, he, nah. What that money is used for, that's what we just approved. Oppose?
Twenty-eight, we have twenty-eight.
Or will be approved in the rest. Abstain. TBK two zero two three dash one two eight dash zero zero eight. Passes with twenty-seven in favor. I mean, twenty-eight, sorry. Twenty-eight. Um, approval, zero, oppose, six, abstain. Number nine.
Number nine, TBK two zero two three one two eight dash zero zero nine, approving and supporting the budget transfer of one thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety cents from Fund Account forty dash six three two five two, purchases food, chapter, to Fund Account four zero dash six three nine zero, other supplies expenses of four hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety cents, and the fund, and to Fund zero four, I'm sorry, four zero dash six six zero zero, consulting expenses of one thousand dollars to cover the shortfalls and other, oh, shortfalls for the I G C event sponsored by the Chapter Administration.
Okay, motion? Okay, Priscilla? Motion, Ronaldo, second? Motion, Renelda second. Questions, comments, concerns? Going to what? Twice? Okay, there are no comments, questions or concerns. I call for the vote. Uh, all those in favor, raise your hands.
10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25. 31, 32.
Okay, opposed? Abstained. TPK 2023-128-009 passes with 32. Approval, 0 opposed, 1 abstained. Okay, now, to the motioning party. Uh, Renelda and Helwood. Uh, the reason why we always have two opening is sometimes we do receive a resolution. So, Dede, there is a resolution here. Approving and supporting budget transfer of 2,500 from fund account 23-6202 travel expenses to 23-6417 internet services, 25 to acquire fiber optic from Navajo Tribal Utility Authority. The motioning party, can we add this to the, um, to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, both motioning party agreed, so we are adding this obje, uh, this resolution to the agenda. Can you please read it into the record?
TPK 2023-128-00, I'm sorry, 010. Approving and supporting the budget transfer of 2,500 from fund account 23-6202 travel expenses of 2,500. To 236417 internet services of 2,500 to acquire fiber optics from the Navajo Tribal Utility Authority sponsored by the Chapter Administration.
Okay, do you have a motion? Mr. Curtis? The Alliance and Renelda? Willie? Questions, comments, concerns? One? Twice? Okay, I call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25.
Opposed? Abstained. TPK 2023-128-010 passes with 32. Approval, 0 opposed, 1 abstained. Okay, that concludes our resolutions. I thank you very much for your participation in voting for these resolutions. A, Adaya, we already did the reports, um, unless Earl must have continued what he was saying earlier.
Um, thank you for your participation, guys. I, um, I guess, just from our office, we wish our birthday people have birthday. Um, like I said, our, 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 our former senior supervisor, we also, we, uh, Danny, Ado, Priscilla, and, um, Ronald. Our, our, um, former, like, maybe the birthdays. And everybody has a capable future. So, happy birthday and best wishes to all of you. Um, so, happy birthday, I guess. And then also, um, Gary, happy birthday. Ado, everybody else, um, I have a younger brother whose birthday is tomorrow. And then, um, so forth. So, hey, happy birthday to each and every one of you. Ado, um, and then with that also, um, happy Mother's Day to each and every one of you. Um, your mother, your son, your daughter, your mother's day. I hope you guys get a good blessing and, 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 um, have a, a, a blessed day on that day. Ado and that, um, also all our graduates, they go, our, our, our high school graduates, our college and university graduates, and then also our eighth grade community, our kindergarten, and then our preschoolers as well. Eight of the graduations to them, so, um, I just want to say that, um, from my office, um, to all of you. Ado, um, we are excited about fiber optics. It is just right out there. You guys don't know, Shangpo, and, 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 so it's now going to be available to us, um, at the chapter to use in our administration, meaning that we're gonna have faster internet service here. And as a chapter, we're gonna be the first chapter to have the, 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 the wider optics. So, hey, I'm pretty much excited about that. Um, I'm not sure when they're gonna make it available to the community, but, um, we were one of the chapter. I didn't know if you guys follow the, the Navajo Nation Council session, but, yeah, what they need to know, we became one of the chapters to be funded for that project, so, hey, um, I gave them, so, hey, that, um, there, um, the cost of it to start with it is 2,500 dollars. So, hey, we to, to, to cover the cost of them to extend it here and to hook it up and all of that. So, if she through that, we're gonna have faster Wi-Fi service as well, so, hey, um, we're, we're, we're going into that new venture with, um, uh, fiber optics, so, hey, that's, that's, and then all the other stuff. Again, what we, um, usually do every year, our annual, uh, in community, and everything welcome, not just for certain people. Hey, the budget, hey, they, uh, depend on it, I give, that's what we're gonna do again this year. Um, so you can come out and have some food, we can share food with you. Ado, hey, the late company, that, that, hey, though, Abo, hey, Haja, Nada, and so, the, we do, that we're gonna do that again, so, um, we, we usually do our, uh, Navajo King Administration as well, we, um, hey, so, hey, try to see our, Thursday evening, she hate, and then that, and that, so, then, hey, Friday morning, so, hey, you can come over and watch, or not, so, they just come over. So, um, again, um, hey, the, by, not, if, 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 I'm glad you're welcome to join us those two days, Friday, Thursday and Friday. So, Thursday, June 8th, and then Friday, June 9th, so, hey, um, um, which we have certain people that I'm not, that do, like, demonstrations, so, hey, they, they, um, I will face what's behind them, and, and, so, um, uh, like I said, we welcome you to that. Aso, um, like I said, um, after tomorrow, I'm not going to be in my office until the last week of May, May, the last week of May, then I'll be back in my office, so, if you need me to, 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 and now, I'm not gonna be available, hey, any thousand, though, Aso, um, if you have any other questions, just help me, um, ask, ask. Aso, we're still, um, waiting to hear all these different funds. So, guys, it's, but, uh, again, like I said, we have, um, open to the community, 30 home renovation projects. Hey, we have that open to you, we have an application for that as well. See, through the, our funds, the, um, that were allocated to the, um, our region, hey, Haja. Aso, on top of that, we also have, um, something else. Um, but altogether, hey, hey, we have, um, bathroom issues, we have, um, how, 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 how renovations, and, 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 um,
Electrification?
Electrification, okay, um, we have, um, we don't know, I can't answer that, it all up to the council, hey, Haja. Um, again, I know that a lot of you are hearing different things from the radio and all of that stuff. Hey, Aso, in, but, um, what we have, like I said, we only have two applications, I think, for the whole renovation project. Hey, so, like, and it doesn't necessarily do with just a house, though. If you want your bathroom reset or something, like, hey, they, 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 you apply for that, so, um, we need those numbers, um, to, to be able to have those numbers as well, because, I assume that they approve that, then that money's gonna come with it, and we don't have all those people buying that and, or just, and, you have to tell, because those, my fund up has to be expended within a certain amount of days. And it's already coming to that time, and, and the council is taking forever to, to approve these things, so, hey, they, so, you want applications, this app, or application, but, make sure that you say that, um, we, uh, we have two different ones, we have the ones that the chapter does, and the one that Aro does. Hey, DK is a proposal that we submitted with 11,000 per home, uh, so, in total, we're gonna be covering 11,000 supplies for every house. So, hey, it's, it's, 30 homes, these are what we submitted that, so, if you wanna be a part of that, we're, we're, and welcome to the, to, but, the other thing that, and say, well, other chapters, hey, one of the criteria that we have is primarily for little income people. Uh, for me, hey, Shay, that, because every, every registered voter count, they have had requirements of their income level and whatnot, as long as they are registered to, to be, um, uh, vote here, then they are looking, we are open to assisting them, whatever, and all our assistance is like that, because, that's it, we don't go according to income levels, so, hey, the, and then the other thing that I also, what I put out there is we also have, um, our, our septic cleaning services, up to 450, you say, that's it, I don't remember. 450 or 250, dash, hey, that's, 250, 250. Hey, nobody has applied to me that also, and so, the reason why I'm telling you this, we say, hey, or we, um, send into our reports, hey, they, and what they say is these chap, this chapter doesn't need this type of funding. So, when we allocate funds, we're not gonna give them that one, but, hey, and so, I encourage you guys to, uh, use these, these plans to, to your advantage, so, hey, so, we have septic, septic, septic cleaning assistance for up to 250 of, 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 um, from here, so, hey, you can, um, applications for that, so, we have a housing discretionary assistance available, also, hey, they, um, window, go toward, about night, so, hey, it's up to 450. So, hey, that's available, you can apply for, propose them if you want, if you want to apply for one, that's fine also. So, hey, you put out, you have those assistance options available to you from this chapter, so, I encourage you all to use it. Any questions?
Septic service, do you have, you guys, oh, septic service that come out?
Yeah, you have to find your own. So, one of the things that we, we, we used to do that, um, like, hey, for, like, the, the housing discretionary, seven children there, so, what they're saying is now, it's fashionable, you're just, they taking people. And we just have to abide by that. Yeah, and that's what they say. Do you have a question?
Who are you, and why, and, and, what you're doing, is that, you?
Intergenerational?
Um, we did, um, invite, uh, no response. We wrote to the, no response. Aso, um, I did reach out to our former president, but he had also responded. Um, but, for Miss Navajo, now delegate for, is going to be here, she said she didn't confirm. Um, our delegate, um, they, he didn't confirm, I think that's better.
Hey, there's Joe, of course, Joe, from, yeah, hey, there's, at 7 o'clock.
You know, we run that, this was a good call. Because, hey, hey, we have, and for, I said, we give us that, and you teach. So, if we, when we reach out to, like, Renelda Cooley or those other entertainers, obviously, they, they're requesting, like, 1,000 to 1,500 dollars. And that's, more like 30 minutes of, of entertainment, so, by, Joe, hey, yeah, and goes from, like, 7 all the way past midnight, and then he does it again, and staying during the daytime. So, to us, that's, that's a, a big pop, and, and, to us, but, when we try to, so, like, for example, we did, um, invite, um, how it up, what is here? We paid her for a whole hour. She came for, like, 5 minutes, and then she said she had something else to do. So, it takes a lot of time and effort, you know, that for people, they'll understand to reach out to these people. We have to reach out to a certain number of people for us to do what we need to do, so, we don't necessarily just say, oh, we're gonna do this. We have to get different quotes, and then based on those quotes, we figure out who would be the best in those avenues to use, meaning that their cost is, 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 matches their entertainment or whatever. Hey, it's all, what we have to do. I mean, like, even the, that, you try to reach out locally through, um, the freezing, he goes around, tries to ask people, but what people say is, so, so, so. He goes around, tries to ask people, but what people say is, so we, we start there, here first. So A D K, reach out to other communities that people, or people have sheep. So one of the things we try to reach out for is the, the, the people that have sheep that make rain on Navajo. But sometimes that's not available. So A D K, all give us their own different costs, and of course, sheep is not cheap right now. I think that the, the, what we thought right now was the lowest, that was like two, two hundred and, um, fifteen, six, seven hundred and sixty dollars a head. But there's other people that are now at three hundred and sixty. Even teens are at three hundred and seventy-five. So A D K, we have to reach out to different, um, people to get these costs, right? But we don't just determine, oh, we're going to go with these guys. And then you notice that we put those, um, um, on the agenda. Because we, we decided that because there's a lot of misinformation that goes around out there, and that, uh, and all that stuff. So now we're saying, okay, now, to, to alleviate that, let's go put these on the agenda and put it before people. So then we can save the night at the, so even though we still go through a whole process, we're still putting it on the agenda for you guys to approve. Joe, how A D K is, is, okay, she got me, no, A D K, what's what we talk about as officials and as, as chapter staff. So that nobody is running around saying that you were fully, oh, A D K, she got nothing, you know? So A D K, but now you put it up before and for you. So our color this year is cardinal red, so our shirts are going to be a cardinal red. And, and that's our theme for this year is ten years strong, and, and this is our tenth year that we're doing this. We started back in two thousand thirteen. So A D K, it's ten years strong, and then honoring our Navajo warriors. And we're, we're not really specifically just putting that towards our veterans. We're putting it towards our front, frontline workers, our, our, our health nurses, our doctors, our police officers, all these people that helped us throughout this whole pandemic. We consider them to be our warriors, to, 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 um, help us go through this pandemic. All our leaders, our Navajo leadership presidents, vice presidents, our delegates, our officials, our staff. So of course, I, we did all of that throughout this whole pandemic. So, and, and we decided to go ahead and honor them. And, and we do this with not just here, but with Nazis, um, Shantos. So A D K, it's, and so we meet with them. And some of, um, youth have been on those meetings, and we talk about how we're going to deal with all of this. ADO, the other thing is, we don't, we don't just solely rely on the fact that the chapter gets it. We try to reach out there to different businesses and whatnot, and, and they, they provide us with, um, financial assistance. So I'm not sure if you guys are aware of, 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 a tour, tour groups that started a business here. We reached out to what is that? There's, um, Eggshell Tours LLC. We told them this is what we want from you. They gave us five hundred dollars. ADO, we got another one from, um, Malco's real two, the adventurous, and, uh, candy tours. And Charlie, they're the big case, which is that first one that, or this way, um, I think the victims. A D K, they gave us five hundred again, also. And then Navajo Ocean Oil and Gas gave us another five hundred. ADO, Navajo County, Navajo County assisted us with six hundred dollars also. Kokumina County, A D K, but small portion that we have, Navajo County, A D K, assist them on, and don't forget what's that? Purchase your chairs and the tables. So A D K, we reached out to these different things. So we don't usually, mostly use our monies here from this community. ADO, we, we get our donations for like four thousand and stuff like that, A D K, we get assisted with that through all of this. So I gave, but not, you shouldn't take, you know, whatever, don't just, um, top it, top it, top it. We both reach out to all of those, and my staff has a tremendous help in all of this. They are the ones that make these contacts of A D K, so, A D K, altogether, as of today, we have over four thousand dollars of, of donations that came in for this event, just this event by itself. So A D K, and, and we put that, um, one of the financial assistance, A D K, we have two thousand one hundred in total. So A D K, so A D K, so we, we, we do a lot of, um, networking with different businesses and so forth. So A D K, so, um, I didn't know if everybody had any questions, I didn't. But maybe we could sing happy birthday for all the birthday people.
All right, then, um, if there are no other questions, comments, or concern, uh, Earl's report, um, we can check off that, check off, saying he gave his report. ADO, there are other people here, but we haven't, um, they're not here, um, unless Hal wants to say something about Pup T.
Happy birthday.
Okay, happy birthday, that way down, you touch, you know?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to your number, Ronald Jacob. Happy birthday to you.
Okay, ADO. ADO, on your agenda, make note of those changes that we have given you. Um, St. Mary's Food Distribution is on Monday, May twenty-second, not the thirtieth, May twenty-second. ADO, intergenerational conference is June eighth and ninth, uh, of this year. A D K, on the back of the chapter house. ADO May is also older American month. So when you get elders, band off, you take out an elder to lunch or go over to their house and provide lunch for them or anything like that, you get elders. ADO, the chapter is closed May twenty-ninth, Memorial Day, uh, and June first, which is the now nation Memorial Day. So those two dates, it will be closed. ADO upcoming scheduled meeting, the planning meeting is Monday, June fifth. Oh, hey, I found. Oh, no, June fifth, oh, yeah, two thousand twenty-three at ten AM. Um, we'll have a poster, um, at, um, the chapter's website, or the chapter, yeah, website and Facebook page. And then we try to put one outside right here too. So by eight, um, the calling number is also provided for that, so people can call in. ADO, chapter meeting was today, and then for next month is on June twelfth at ten AM. And like I explained, um, earlier, we don't start the chapter meeting until we hit twenty-five people corn. We still have a twenty-five people corn here at this chapter. They say, oh, chapters, A D K, we do stick down to fifteen. Um, so, uh, we, we, no, we have the option to do that, but, um, we're, but right now, we're doing twenty-five people. Whether they're sitting here with us at, in person, or calling in, like, right now, there were two people that were listening to the call in. So A D K, ADO, um, district two raising meeting is on May eleventh at Malco Mountain. So that was confirmed, May eleventh at Malco Mountain, that's in three days. ADO permittees meeting, A D K's on May seventeenth, and it's going to be over there at the Zupkin Community Church. So that's where the, um, permittees meeting will be, and it's going to be a training session, right? For certification, um, what's it called?
Beef quality assurance.
And I can tell you that, very interesting to know, because I've attended the permittees meeting last month, and we were given information on how to take care of a cow, what, what beef quality is, and what these fires of, um, uh, beef, what they're looking for, how valuable a carcass of a cow is. So A D K, so it's very interesting. Like I said, permitting holders, permit holders, uh, go to those meetings. ADO, in the, um, or with the, that's A D K. All of us in favor, raise your hands. Oppose? Abstained. We are going to be adjourned by what? And we are adjourned at two oh four. Again, have a wonderful day, a wonderful week.